Good morning. Today is Thursday, July 30th, 2020. We're here for a work session. As always, we will start with the pledge. Tim, can you please take it?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tim.
Do you want to do a moment of silence?
I'd like to.
Do you want to do a moment of silence?
Um, I was gonna make a statement on it, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. I'm gonna honor, thank you. Um, okay, uh, before we go into work session item, I'd like to make two statements, two brief statements. Last Saturday, we lost a pillar of our community, a lifelong resident of Riverhead and dedicated public servant of more than fifty years, Justice Alan Smith served as our town and, uh, served our town and the county of Suffolk in a multitude of capacities, as attorney, as assistant district attorney, as Riverhead Town Attorney, uh, Riverhead Town Supervisor, and he is a revered justice of our, uh, and a revered justice of our courthouse for twenty years. As well as ser- serving for decades with the Riverhead Volunteer Fire Department, this is just a thimble of Judge Smith's many achievements in life here in Riverhead. One of the accomplishments he was most proud of was co-founding the East End Regional Intervention Court, more commonly known as the East End Drug Court. Justice Smith's belief, believed, uh, to rehabilitate and offer treatment options to drug offenders, thereby allowing them a chance to beat their addiction and become productive members of society rather than remaining in a jail cell, increasing the odds of repetitive self-destructive behavior upon release. As a lifelong champion of supporting our community and upholding the laws and the rights of the residents of Riverhead, I find it fitting to propose to the town board, in the near future, we honor the memory of Justice Smith. I hope to propose we name Howell Avenue or any other Riverhead building Honorable Alan M. Smith Way or Justice Alan M. Smith Way. And members of the board like to make a statement on his behalf?
I think all the accolades, you could go on for days talking about things that he's done, he was involved with, but to me, uh, knowing Judge Smith for quite a few years, the most significant thing, I think, is, is who he was as a person. Every time I saw him, you'd have a conversation, and I would run into him in a grocery store. I'd run into him at the gas station. I'd see him at town hall, obviously, when I worked in the police department. And he was always very enlightening with his stories, and he, he saw a lot of stuff in his lifetime, and he had a lot of good stories to share. But just his, his work ethic and his, his value to the community was second to none. I mean, he was involved in so many service organizations, and if you needed something, Alan would be there. Uh, and I have to admit, he had a very strong personality, and, uh, if he's, he called it as he saw it, which I have to respect somebody for that. Uh, you always knew where he stood, agree or disagree, but, uh, he was a true gentleman, and Riverhead, as the saying goes, Riverhead lost a great one.
Yeah, I, I wanna, you know, mirror those comments, but, uh, I had the pleasure of being at Cooper Gin with a couple of friends having lunch only about two or three weeks ago, and he happened to be sitting directly next to us, and we sat and talked across the tables, and, uh, what a, what a brilliant man. I always admired his intelligence, his wittiness, and his compassion for people, uh, but I, but ultimately, I loved his sense of humor. He really had this really cool sense of humor. When I first got elected, I brought my little puppy into the office, and he came by as all the ladies in, uh, the tax receiver's office was there, and he said, "Oh, my goodness, this town is going to the dogs." And I knew it was a shot at me, but it was hysterical at the time, and that's just the way he was. He was such a funny and, uh, and an intelligent man, and I, I will miss him very much.
I think the thing that, for me, that's most striking about Alan is how much he loved Riverhead. Um, he really loved our town, and he fought, he spent, I would say, a good part of his life fighting hard to make Riverhead a better place. It seemed like it was such a shock to learn of Alan's passing. It seemed like he was someone who would just always be here taking care of all of us. So, um, I send out prayers and condolences to his family.
Yes. And I got to meet Alan in 2000, when I first, I was new in town, and I joined the Riverhead Rotary Club, and he welcomed me in, and we had lunch, and we talked, and we had a very friendly relationship through Rotary until I got on the town board, and then he fought for that courthouse that, you know, we couldn't afford at the time. And finally, you know, after a ten-year plan of balancing the budget, and, and many arguments back and forth with different solutions on how to fix the problem that we have over at the courthouse, which is what he's passionate about. Screaming matches in his office, and then decent conversations afterwards. Uh, he was very helpful through the whole bail reform thing. I spent four hours with him in his office talking to him about the bail reform and the problems, and, you know, him giving me newspaper articles and education materials that they were giving him on what he felt was his waste of time experiences in Albany trying to tell people how the bail reform wasn't going to work, and that discretion needed to be left up to the judges. So, I hope that someday, Alan, you'll look down, and we'll have that courthouse that you can be proud of, and, um, that we'll be able to name the courthouse after him someday also. So, he was a pillar in the community, and he was a great town justice who really cared about the residents of the town and the youth of this town with the youth court and mock trials, so that kids could learn on both sides of the aisles how to become lawyers or how, what it's like to be a defendant. And it's, um, he was really a very educational, smart, wise person, and I wish him and his family the best. I, I, that he rests in peace and that his family, um, thinks about the good things that Alan has done for the town. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, the second statement I'd like to make, it concerns pools. Um, my office has constantly received, um, phone calls asking for clarification on, uh, opening pools, and, uh, one particular community, uh, well upon, um, they were informed that the town board decided to close their pool, which is, I know, it is.
I know, I've been hearing this.
Okay, so therefore, making the statement, I want to clarify everything concerning swimming pools in New York State. The governor has allowed each entity to elect to reopen their pools. Many state and town pools remain closed due to the stringent and costly protocols that are required by the CDC and the Department of Health, including personnel, screening, ventilation, uh, safety plans in place, and constant cleaning. Um, again, many HOAs here in the East End have elected not to open their pools, including my community, who is, um, uh, an HOA. Please note that it's, it's important that Town of Riverhead has no authority to open or close public or private pools. Under COVID-19, the sole responsibility is left up to the state. Townships, if it is a local pool, and we have no local pools, or the board, if it's an HOA. Any questions concerning swimming pools can be directed to the Suffolk County Health Department Pool Services, and they do have a hotline, and it does work, as I called it yesterday. Six-three-one-eight-five-four-two-five-two-five, not the Town of Riverhead. For information, also, uh, further information on New York State protocols on pools, you can also visit our website. We put in this information today as a public notice. So, moving forward, um, we are now going to start with, uh, the first discussion, which is building planning matters surrounding 331 East Main Street, site plan, and spec- uh, special permit. Murphy and Edward.
Chip, do you see Richard or Roy or, see Richard, Roy, or Cliff? Okay. Okay.
Jody? Jody?
What?
Do you know what the, the other two location, who is talking about, who has to, the sides across the street?
There was one that was by, by the river, across from Centennial Road, but he doesn't want it there.
Okay.
And then he looked through it, he was thinking about it, but it's just, it's too much money to fix the entire building. He didn't want it there. And then the other location he was thinking about was possibly in one of the parking lots where the aquarium parks, but I don't think Joe's gonna want that either. He doesn't even own the property.
Yeah, okay. Cause I put a call into him yesterday.
To Joe?
No, to Richard.
Okay.
To talk to him about.
Did he, did he mention anything?
I, when I went to bed last night at ten o'clock, I saw, I, he had returned the call. I missed the call, so I didn't get a chance to talk to him.
Okay, guys. Good morning. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Yes.
It's working.
All right, we're set, then. All right, good. Good morning.
All right, good morning, board. Greg Bergman, Town of Riverhead Planning Department. Um, we're here to have a follow-up discussion to the 331 East Main Street, uh, thirty-six unit residential apartment building. It's proposed in downtown Riverhead. Um, we had a public hearing on the matter a couple of weeks ago, and there were some issues that were raised. Um, we're here to hopefully just get some clarification, be able to move forward on this project. Um, I did place at your podiums, a little packet with some information. So I'll go through, I did prepare a memo dated July 22nd, which was distributed to the board, and I'll just summarize it. So, in order to move forward with the special permit and site plan approval, the town board must address the following issues with regards to the special permit and site plan. There are a couple of outstanding things. One is the preservation, the relocation of the existing Norton House and the subject property, uh, which we've discussed several times. Uh, review and direction on the final ARB comments dated June 21st, 2020, and review and direction on the landmarks preservation comments dated June 9th, 2020. Um, and then also clear direction on the interactive ground floor uses, which were discussed at the July 21st, 2020 public hearing on the site plan and special permit. Um, there are a couple of remaining issues that the applicant needs to address. Um, those are, I won't go into detail on those, but the significant ones that we need direction from the town board on are the first three. Um, so I guess we'd probably start, best to start off to discuss the desire of the town board to preserve and relocate the Norton House, or how the board would like to proceed with that aspect of the review.
I think at this point in time, uh, to preserve and relocate the Norton House, as much as I'd like to, I think the, not having a, a perfect location to put it is one problem, and the second problem, probably more importantly, is, would be the expense of actually doing it. Not the moving itself, because if the developer agreed to help out with that, but in the renovation of that, that particular building, I think you're probably looking at, uh, and I'm not an expert in this, but I would say you're probably looking at at least $500,000 to redo this house and bring it back to its former glory. Uh, I understand there's a lot of, a lot of infrastructure damage with this building. Uh, so at this point in time, I don't favor relocating that building.
All right. Uh, any additional board members have, uh, concerns or would like to give some direction?
I'd like to defer to Cliff and Richard, I think, who were in Zoom and wanted to maybe make a brief statement about it or enlighten us on some of the details. Do you want to, um, Cliff, can you hear?
Yeah.
Do you want to make any comments?
Well, the, uh, the neighbors to the east and west are completely in support of it. They see it as a plus. They see it as, as a positive addition to Main Street. They have ideas for it. Uh, we haven't gotten very far on information from the parking district, so I'm not sure about that. Uh, but I, I think it's far short of a $500,000 job. That's, that's my opinion off the, off the top of my head, but, uh, I'm sorry, you have a question or?
No, I, I just, we've been working on this for a couple of weeks, and it just seems that when we think we're getting two steps forward, we get a step back, but I'd love to see the Norton House relocated. Um, I don't, Tim, did you have a chance to talk to the parking district about it?
I did not. We, we haven't met.
Okay. I think it's important to hear what the parking district has to say about it. Um, I thought that they were going to be meeting last week. I guess that didn't happen, but I, because they will lose spaces, and the parking for that building, once it's relocated, would also be a matter that would have to be addressed. I know that I did speak to, uh, Jim Wooton about it yesterday, and I know Richard had spoken to the funeral home director that was interested in.
Any change in the average of, of floor plan, five-seventy-six?
Putting it in the middle, so I think that, um, I don't know if it could be moved. I know that we were trying to move it down by, across from Turquoise Grill. I had spoken to Bob Castaldi about it. He owns property there, and it's like a dilapidated shed, and he was excited about the idea, and went and looked at it, and said that the cost to, you know, take the roof off, move the house, uh, the second story is really the only thing that is, um, historic, that should be preserved. He said that the windows on the first floor would have to be replaced within the next two or three years, that the, um, the inside would have to be gutted with the sheetrock, that new electricity, new wiring would have to be done, that the studs inside the house would have to be sistered with two-by-sixes, cause there are only two-by-fours in order to support the new roof. You know, he said it was, it came with a tremendous expense, and as I discussed in my Zoom conference with Richard and Cliff on, it was either Monday or Tuesday, um, it was Monday, when, that any, any building that is constructed or reconstructed or foundation on town property would have to be built with prevailing wage. So, that would be, you know, it, it would be a good thing for local employment, but it's, it's an added expense that we didn't consider. And then I know the town attorney was looking into whether or not we could either do a ground lease or cut out a portion of the, you know, base floor, or cut out a portion of the parking district and, and give it to either the funeral home or to the, you know, combine it with the Howell House, so that one of those, uh, businesses would take title to that property and then do the renovations themselves. But it just seems like it's, it's going to be very expensive, and that not a lot of people are saying, "I have the money and I, I want to do it." So, it's a hurdle, and we haven't heard from the parking district yet. So, I, I don't want to hold the applicant up. I think that it's important to move our downtown and our Main Street forward. I think that if we could find a location for the Norton House within the next, you know, week or two weeks, I, I, I have no problem with moving forward and approving the site plan, cause I don't want to hold them up. But I would like something in there saying that if a suitable location was found, come up with a number. I know that, uh, Richard had spoken to the owner of the property that said that they would be interested, that they would definitely move the house, but it's the other expenses and how they're going to get paid for that we would have to take into consideration and see what the actual number is. So, if we could come up with a number, if the building could be moved prior to demolition and have that somewhere in the site plan approval, if there could be an agreement with the developer for that, I would love to see that happen. And if it becomes too cost prohibitive, then the idea would just be abandoned, but, you know, I don't want to hold you up.
So, I, I also think that Richard is there. Richard, did you want to comment on that?
Richard is not there, is he?
He was there.
Uh, there's no Richard.
Okay.
I, I want to see it preserved. Um, I want to know.
It's a matter, it's a matter of political will, totally, at this point, and, uh, I think the expenses incurred could be, could be taken by the end user, and we want, we looked for some sort of a solution where we could transfer the property and not include the town in the whole process. But that's not doable if the parking district is not cooperating, so, uh, I understand, and I completely don't want to delay the, the applicant. Certainly, that was the least of our, I mean, we were certainly not interested in doing that, and so, it's really a matter of political will, I believe. And I understand if, I understand if the board does not support it, they want to move forward, they don't want to hold up the applicant. I support that, so.
Yeah, it, it has nothing to do with political will and politics. It has all to do with dollars and cents. And during the COVID and the town operating at a deficit from our budget now, who's going to pay for it? That's what it boils down to. It has nothing to do with political will.
Yep. I, I agree that, that it, it's all about dollars and cents, and I, I believe that, uh, that it can be handled by the end user, but, um.
We don't know who the end user is, Cliff.
Okay, I'm just gonna weigh in. I mean, I, I, if we, if we could have done it, I would have liked, I mean, I thought it was a great idea, and I would have liked to have done it if we could make it work, um, if we could find a place for it. But in the meantime, I agree that we move on.
Mr. Manjano, just for the record, Mr. Manjano was very supportive of, of adding it to his property, so. Um, but we still haven't heard from parking. I'd like to hear more from parking, if possible, but if that's not doable, um, I understand.
And I did speak to, um, like I said, I spoke with Jim Wooton, and Mr. Manjano would actually like to see the building behind the funeral home, not next to him on Main Street, cause he doesn't want to lose that parking either, I believe. So, the discussions can still happen, and the site plan approval can still happen, and if we can find a location for it, the developer has agreed to move it, but we have to nail down the numbers and find out how much it's going to cost and who's going to pay for it.
Okay, so let's move forward. Um, any other statements on this discussion? I'll make my, um, my statement. It's not political will. I'm not sitting here playing politics. I'm moving buildings in Riverhead. So, let, take that out of our vocabulary here. We're discussing a building that has a very small percentage of landmark status. Uh, you have a builder who has a comprehensive plan in place. He's worked with the plans. Uh, our planning department is, is, uh, has informed me that he's meeting all our codes and all the regulations required. We can't stagger back. We need to move Riverhead forward. I support this going forward. If, Jody, if in the meantime, there is a viable, we can all agree together, that we can all send emails, and we can come up to a consensus. This is the third or the fourth time that this building has been before us. It's time for us to move this project forward. Okay, and, and thank you.
And I've, and I've been working on it every day, and it just seems that, like I said, we take two steps forward and one step back. Um, so.
Yes, well, let's move forward.
Yeah.
Let's take a big, big step forward now.
All right, so I, I believe that, uh, addresses the comments from the Norton House. Um, now, item numbers two and three from my memo. Number two really dealt with ARB comments and LPC comments. Um, I, I believe we've heard from the LPC. I, I think we're all clear on their intention and their desire. Just to comment into the architectural review boards, which ties into number three. So, the ARB on October 23rd, 2019, uh, they reviewed this project, and at that time, they recommended a preliminary approval contingent upon the applicant submitting final drawings and final material samples. Um, so now we fast forward to their June 24th meeting, 2020. Um, the material samples were approved, and then they kind of incorporated a discussion of eliminating the show windows. Now, this kind of led into a, a long discussion with the town board, and we need to get some clarification on that. So, I, I believe some of the, some of the confusion stemmed from an interpretation of the intent and purposes from the DC1 zoning district. Uh, just for the record, I'll read into what the purpose and intent of the DC1 district is, and then we can address some of the comments. So, the town code 301-140 reads, "The intent of the Downtown Center 1 Main Street DC1 zoning use district is to allow, maintain, and foster a traditional downtown character along Main Street with a pedestrian-friendly streetscape, active ground floor uses, a 24-hour presence from Upper Story Residential with a compact walkable scale." Um, so there is a, there is language in there which speaks to active ground floor uses. Um, at the public hearing on July 21st, that sort of expanded into a claim that, quote, "interactive uses" were required on the ground floor. Just to be clear, that there is nothing in the code that requires retail uses on the ground floor. Um, I think that language, "active ground floor use," kind of leaves some room for interpretation. Um, just to kind of recap quickly for the board, uh, with the apartment buildings that have been coming into downtown Riverhead, when the applicants came back, came to the planning department, I believe it was in late 2018. Um, you know, we discussed issues with them about the height of the building, so they reduced it to four stories, and the, they were also, you know, instructed that they would face some opposition if they did not provide parking. Um, based on those comments, based on the desires of the board at that time, the applicant came in with a ground floor parking use, which provided thirty-six parking stalls, one for each residential unit. Um, and then kind of late in the game, like I said, the, the issue of interactive ground floor uses did come up. The applicant, uh, Mr. Kent, I believe, two days ago, did provide, provide some sketches, which have been included in the packet I distributed to the board. They did do some modification to that ground floor parking area. Um, they are able to sort of reconfigure the space on the ground floor. There would still be a small display window in the northeast corner of the building, but they are now, they could provide an 812-square-foot retail space on the northwest corner of that building. Um, as a result of the relocation and the reconfiguration, they would only lose two parking stalls within the ground floor parking area. So, they would still provide 34 parking spaces, and they would be able to provide an 812-square-foot retail space. Um, if that satisfies the board, you know, if the board is okay with the loss of two parking stalls, um, you know, I'd like some direction and get some clarification for the applicant as to if that satisfies.
So, I don't remember that publicly we said there had to be, of course, we liked to have parking, but I don't remember, recall that meeting. I feel like that was, might have been a meeting with the supervisor where that happened. I don't know. But for me, I would, parking would, should not drive a project. I think the use should drive a project, and the changes actually don't lose very many parking spots. I mean, I think that if we want to have a benefit to the community, we, we definitely need something happening on that first floor. We need some kind of retail, otherwise, what is the community getting from it? And I don't believe that, uh, display windows, um, are in active use. I don't consider that in active use in any way. So, that actually goes against our code, and I do have printouts from the mass, the comprehensive plan which delineated that this needed to be an active space and recommends retail. Um, I did reach out, I did speak, um, at length, Jefferson and I actually spoke at length with Barry Long about this, and Barry, um, you know, talked about how the first floor, that we should have something that animates the streetscape there, and if you think about what we're trying to do downtown in revitalizing the downtown, you know, we, we need to, an act, we need an active use on that first floor, especially if we want to draw people walking. I'm just gonna mention some of the comments that I did, uh, forward what we got today, and I thought there was some kind of utility storage here. Is there some kind of?
There is.
There is.
That's where the, um, that's where the window with just the, um, art viewing would take place. It's on the northeast corner, is what Greg said, when he gave his original.
So, I mean, it's a small space. For me, I don't like the idea of utility space right there on, on the first floor on Main Street.
Well, you, but you would, you would not see the utility space from Main Street. There is, I, it's probably about a three-foot deep, so there is a small display window.
Right.
So, you're not, you're not going to see utility space when you're walking down Main Street.
I know, it just would be nice if the utility space could be put somewhere else, which would enable more room for retail, correct?
Well, so, there's an issue with the floodplain, uh, because the flood elevations in this property, um, you know, they, they almost, the flood zone basically almost comes up to Main Street. So, there is the issue of putting utilities and putting other retail spaces aside from parking in an area that is prone to flooding. Uh, that, that could, that could present significant maintenance issues for someone who's looking to develop a, a property. I mean, they, like I said, they are providing an 812-square-foot retail space, so.
And, and I'm gonna say that, uh, for me, it's moving in the right direction, and I'm happy about that. You are moving in a, a good direction for us. I just think actually we can do more.
I just think actually we can do more. This is such a, a key location for us. So I did forward what was happening on to, we have architects that are involved in our committees and workforce and I like to look to them for advice. So I'm just going to read a couple of comments. We have an architect on, then I'm going to defer to Roy to. We have an architect on the ARB and an architect on the downtown committee. This says, "Not enough information, not the full plan nor the site plan. I've always felt this was a critical parcel, re the connection between Main Street and the river. It needs more retail on the road to the river, so people are encouraged to walk. The walkway should be contin, continu, continuous to the river, not dead-end parking. The southwest corner is important and should be developed with activity, attractive, facing the river, not a large parking lot and trash storage. Maybe suggest corner retail and take another parking spot from the east for trash. Eliminate a too-wide entry to parking." There's something about Barry. "The best plan of Barry's for the square included redevelopment facing the river, which was so much better than service." I would have liked to have seen, I, I did not like how they flipped the parking from the existing. I would suggest two to four spots incorporate, that's for electric vehicle infrastructure. "I do not think the exit stairways meet code. They need to either have direct access to the street or be in a fire-rated corridor." And the other architect said, "This is an improvement from a glass narrow display strip to a retail space." I am happy about that. We are moving in the right direction. "The five-foot indent entry is not very inviting. The entry should be integrated to the entire street facade to promote street activities, though without any elevations, it is still questionable." So I think they're having trouble seeing exactly what's having, happening here. Roy, did you want to chime in?
Yes, thank you. At last week's ARB meeting, we took a second look at this because, and we had a mini debate and the majority of the ARB feels that any attempt to do so-called show windows is not going to fly in downtown Riverhead anymore. We tried it at the other end of Main Street, as you all know, and it just doesn't work. While our main focus is the appearance of the building and how it looks, it's easy for us to say if we add windows, that somehow that's better, but that's a false decision. If we're going to add show windows with no animation behind them, the ARB is, is now going to take the position that we won't approve those type of projects. We generally like this building. We're ready for an approval, but if we're going to have to be always given buildings, because this is going to set another precedent and we're going to have more like this, where we have false windows on Main Street, the ARB is not going to accept that. Having said that, I'm very pleased with this latest submission. I think we are moving forward. Put a small space, we call it retail, but it's some sort of animated space. We don't know what's going to move in, but promote a space along Main Street that people will be there and use. I think as a certain amount of compromise, because as an architect, I do understand the constraints that the developer has, if he must have a utility space in that northeast corner, as a compromise, maybe we say, okay, that one is fine. We've got retail on the other corner. Now, however, he's still showing a show window in front of the utility space. There's also nothing that says every street wall has to have a window in. Then maybe we just want to eliminate the show window on the other side. The ARB previously had said, if you don't need that space, maybe even pull that window wall out, push your exterior wall back and create a, maybe a little alcove or something else where we could maybe put a little seating area. I realize that may create other site planning issues, but it would also open up the width of the street and create a space for maybe some street furniture or more visual interest. Then that entrance to the building, which is really not a building entrance, let's be honest what that is. That's a fire exit. That is not meant to be the main entrance to this building, which in itself is sort of sad. Because if you're going to have residential on Main Street, the main entrance should be on Main Street. But again, I understand their constraints and design that they can't allow that. Well, this would make that fire exit entrance look a little more prominent, even if it's not used for that. It wouldn't be in this dark alcove the way they have it now. Then we still have now, a nice retail space on the corner. It's small, but in today's environment, maybe small retail is the best we can hope for. So we generally like what we're seeing. Of course, we haven't seen a revised elevation to show what that retail space is going to look like. I understand they threw that plan together very quickly. They don't even show a door into the retail space on Main Street in the plan. I'm sure they're going to change that. But we're heading in the right direction and if they're going to agree to that and we can get a new revised elevation that shows a more active streak elevation with an entrance into the retail and reconfigure the other side where we don't need a show window, I think then the ARB is going to be very pleased with this application.
So I just want to piggyback, thank you, Roy. Roy brought up a couple of points and actually Barry Long spoke at length about how he thought there should be an entrance on Main Street. So I'm glad that you brought that point up, Roy. And, you know, and, and the point, if we start, and, and we are, we are very appreciative that you're moving in the right direction to do retail on the first floor, but if we don't require retail on the first floor, we could actually end up with very little retail in the whole downtown area. Or we could end up with 15 buildings that have glass in the windows on the first floor. So I think it's, you know, important for us as a town board and as a town, you know, if we want to revitalize our downtown, we want to have it lively and walkable, then we need to require this on the first floor. And it is in our, it is in our comprehensive plan and in our code.
We asked for retail and they've given us retail. So I think what you're saying, Roy, makes a lot of sense about maybe doing some, you know, pillars or something, like just have the electric wall end where it is right now and then have that be an overhang to the building to make more of an entrance. But it'd be interesting to see the new elevation on the first floor. Maybe a sitting area or something to make that entrance, because the entrance to the retail is from within that corridor. So there would be an empty space. If you end the electric wall where it is now, then people would see that the entrance is on the side, rather than having to go into the building and into the retail store.
Correct. But the entrance to retail could be on the main facade, right onto Main Street, too.
The landmarks, I recall when we originally met, Cliff, they weren't thrilled about the entrance that was shown on Main Street at the time, right? And the same thing went with the Conifer Building. We tried to make the entrance kind of seem that it wasn't there on Main Street. They wanted to see more of the window and the retail space and the art space on Conifer. And I think that's what we're trying to do here. The retail is not an issue and I thank you for acknowledging that and for putting that into your plan for the retail on the first floor. It's a major improvement from just the picture windows. But I think that Roy's recommendations and maybe doing, you know, corner posts or something underneath that section of the building to support the second, third, and fourth floor, if you could do something like that and have an area that makes more of a significant entrance to the building that carries the first floor line across, I think that's an excellent recommendation, Roy.
I think that.
Yes, it, it.
Go ahead, Roy.
It will animate, it, it will provide more variety in that street facade, okay? Architectural street facades shouldn't be 100% the same design, okay? I always refer to that other big white elephant building and I'm not going to name names, but that's a very monotonous facade. It has very little, almost no variety in design. This building has more variety in design and it's one of the reasons that we like it. So all we're suggesting is put a little more variety in that first floor portion of this street facade.
Yeah, we're talking about 16 feet.
Right.
16 feet is the width of that wall right there.
Right.
You know, it doesn't make sense to me to not say, I mean, with all due respect, Jody, I felt like you're saying two different things. You know, we're saying make it more lively, but then you're saying don't put the entrance on the Main Street. And I, I would be very surprised if landmarks didn't want to see the entrance on Main Street, because that seems like that works and any architect or any planner that I've talked to in the last week made that suggestion. So I certainly ask, and I think you guys, I think they're going to be coming back to the ARB anyway, so I would frankly prefer to have the ARB weigh in or sometimes we do it by email when we're trying to move a project along. But I would like to have the ARB weigh in, because the ARB are three architects and one landscape planner. So I tend to defer to them. But I would certainly, I mean, I like that we're doing retail. I would like to see the retail space bigger if it was possible. And I would definitely like to see the entrance on Main Street and I would like to see the whole area animated. That's in line with what we're trying to do in our downtown area and I think we should be required, that should be required of all projects moving forward. I can't even believe we're at this place.
If I could, I would just like to offer one comment, if not anecdotally. The creation of retail space does not necessarily mean that that retail space would be filled. I, I don't currently have any sort of data, but, I mean, take a walk down East Main Street right now, we have a number of vacancies. So I mean, to say, to, to expand the space for when we can't fill our existing retail space to create it more lively or Main Street, if you, you know, it doesn't always follow that if you build it, they will come. You know, we have, we have, we had, the proof is in the pudding, so to speak, where you've got a number of vacancies. So I, I admire and I appreciate the comments from the ARB, from the Landmarks Preservation. These boards are advisory and I do not mean to downplay their importance at all. They are professional, design professionals and they have opinions, but the ultimate decision lies with this board. So I mean, you know, we've, we've been through, as I said, the ARB offered preliminary approval of this project in October. At, at no time, to my knowledge, was any of the, these comments were raised back in October when they offered preliminary approval. But I mean, to send this back to the ARB and maybe get potentially a new set of comments and kind of redesign, ultimately, the decision does lie with this board.
But our job, our job, Greg, here is to advocate for our town. I mean, certainly, we've got good developers here who've been working with us, but our job is to advocate for Riverhead. And I'm sorry, but that's kind of, I mean, for me, that would be a defeatist attitude, like, oh, well, we haven't, we don't have anything in this space right now, so that's not going to happen. That is going to happen. And look at what we're doing right now with the town square. We've got a lot happening in the downtown area. Things are going to get better down there. And once we close off these retail spaces on the ground floor, they're gone forever. And where do you want lively things happening? You want it on the ground floor. And, I mean, it's even better for the people that live there. I think if I was living in an apartment, I'd want things happening down there on the street level. I'd want to be able to come in off of Main Street and have things happening right there. So I don't think we're, I'm almost finished. I don't think we're trying to delay the applicant. That's not something we want to do. I think we can move quickly. The ARB has already discussed it. A lot of times, they do their comments via email. You guys can agree on that and we'll keep the project moving along. But you know what? Let's do this project and get it right and let's advocate for our town.
If I could offer a recommendation to the board. We basically have two proposals before you at this time. One is the, the former project with the display windows along the entire frontage. We now have a revised proposal with the 112 square feet and then the other side of the building having a display window area or lack of a window, some sort of open space area for the public. If I could offer a recommendation is, if we move forward with the, an approval, either for, hopefully for Tuesday's meeting, is it between the preliminary approval, this is only for preliminary approval and not for final, to approve the preliminary approval subject to getting revised elevation plans for the, how the first floor is going to look prior to the submission of a final site plan application.
I'd like to comment from the mezzanine level if I could.
Up in your loop.
Well, it seems like the meeting is held up front and the rest of us are forgotten back here.
Yeah, I know.
One thing I want to mention is that I'm, I'm very thankful that for this project, that they've taken a chance to do market rate housing or apartments in downtown. It is so badly needed. And they're, and make no mistake, they're making a risk by doing this, because they're not sure they're going to be able to fill these apartments. They don't have a crystal ball that says that. But what they're developing is important for our downtown. And that's where Catherine, I'm saying, I am looking out for the people in the town of Riverhead, because to have market rate down there is a huge improvement over any of the workforce housing that we currently have more than enough of. Okay? So having said that, if you're building a market rate project and you have 36 apartments and in the original plan, you had 36 parking spaces, that goes hand in hand. You start taking parking spaces away from that and now what, what do you do? You say apartment number 34 and 35, you guys don't get a parking space, but the other people do. Once you start taking more and more parking spaces away, it's going to be harder for them to market it at market rate. So it's important to me to keep as many spaces as we have. Having said that, I am comfortable in losing two spaces for those two poor apartments that won't have parking to get the retail, I do like what you submitted. I think retail is needed, something is needed on the ground floor, rather than having that big box that was referred to earlier. But keep in mind, market rate, it's important and it's important to have parking for market rate apartments.
So from the other side of the mezzanine, I'm sorry. I would just say, I, I really do like the amended site plan and, and project with the retail space. And I think some of the ARB recommendations here are also very good. And I think if we don't hold up the project and we can still integrate some of these things, I think it can be a wonderful, you know, scene on Main Street. And I, I do agree with, with Catherine that the, I think that the, the main entrance should be on, on Main Street. That's one of the things, I think. It brings people from the street into the building and to get into the corridor, I just don't, don't think it makes sense, but that's my opinion.
Okay, great. And Catherine, I just want to clarify, you said something about a discussion with the supervisor. I, I didn't understand.
No, the previous supervisor.
Oh, okay, yeah, I didn't understand, because I had no knowledge of it.
And, and, you know, Tim.
Hold on a second. That, from the center of the mezzanine, can I speak now? Sorry. So there was a couple of comments that were made and I just want to give you my stance on it. The, Roy, I agree with you. This is a preliminary site plan. Let's not, you know, do a whole PhD on this now. If there has to be adjustments, we can make them and they can be made. All right, going back to the ARB and, and elongating this problem, this issue, again, this is the third or the fourth time it's here. It's preliminary. That means before, final. Everybody's in agreement that there can be adjustments. We should move forward. This should be voted on next Tuesday. There was a, a comment made about Barry Long. He's done a lot of work for town. He was in a, he's a consultant to us. He does not direct what we do. It's the board that decides what we do in Main Street. He's, again, he's done a lot of work here. We appreciate it. He is, he's putting together a patent book, how we, the town should look. We've given him a lot of information. We've kept him in the loop on all our projects, but we cannot have him direct the future of downtown and, and us, or the board approving buildings. And again, the patent book is about to be released. It's in preliminary phases, not final. And we're going to take his opinions and then we're going to either incorporate them, adjust them. Again, it's a consultant. We should not constantly have Barry Long decide how we're going to do our town hall. Okay, we're going to purchase buildings. We're going to win, we'll have a letter of intent on those three buildings. He knows about it, but we need to move forward in all our projects. So given that, we should go on to the next discussion.
I want to make, I want to make one more comment. I agree with Tim. I'm very appreciative, you know, I've been, I've said this many times, I'm appreciative that we are doing market rate. I think it's good to have parking. I just don't think parking should drive things. I think parking can actually be put anywhere. And, you know, as Tim said, for this, we're only losing two parking spots. And as far as, as far as, you know, bringing up Barry, Barry is an architect and an urban planner with great experience and as a board member, I defer to people who are experts in their field. So yes, I am bringing up information that I received from architects and from people that do this. I do, I do my homework and defer to people. And yes, we want to move it along, but as you come, we're, we're coming down the home stretch, let's get the thing right. You know, let's just not all of a sudden say, hurry up, let's just get this done, let's slap it together. The ARB is not asking to delay the project. I think the ARB probably could weigh right in an email and have it done in a day or two. Roy, we weren't asking them to come back. Can you answer to that?
You're correct. We would not need them to come back. We, okay. They, they understand that, you know, we need to look at how the building's going to look like. That means we need building elevations. It's great that they sent us the little plan. I like to look at plans too. They didn't give us a building elevation. So of course, all they have to do, it takes an architect less than a day, draw the new revised building elevation. Send it to us. We'll review it electronically. And if it has everything we've been talking about, the ARB's going to approve it there and then.
We'd like to see it too.
If they do it the next week, we would have an approval from the ARB in the next week.
Okay, so we have two people.
If we don't get that based on the vote we took last week, the ARB's going to deny it, okay?
If I could just.
That's where we're at, very simple.
Okay, got it. We have two people want to speak. We'll have Jeff and then we'll have Chris Ken.
Just to repeat my prior statement, we could have a resolution for preliminary site plan approval for you for Tuesday. Based upon the revised plan, subject to getting revised elevations to be reviewed and approved by the ARB prior to the submission of the final. That way, the ARB can look at it again. Doesn't give us until Tuesday to have to, for Roy to look, and the ARB to look at it again. It gives us that time between preliminary and final so they can go ahead with the project now. So I think we can accomplish that approval now. And I think there's consensus on the board. You like the revised plan with the 800. Okay.
Okay.
Chris, you heard that?
Yes.
Okay. The second part of that, in order to get the approval on for Tuesday, and this is a question to the board. I believe we've heard that there is not going to be the relocation of the Norton House.
No. There's a contingency that the developer has agreed to pay what the estimate says right now as far, and that would be the cap to move the building. Because Landmarks did this investigation with Verizon, with Optimum, with the masonry work for the new foundation, and with the actual building of the moving, building. It costs $96,658 to do that. It costs $175,000 estimated to demolish the building. So there would actually be a cost savings to the developer. And I think that the developer has agreed to that move the building to a location if we were to find one in a timely fashion before final approval and before they're ready to knock the building down. So if we could come up with a number that the developer is happy with as far as the relocation of this building. And if we don't find a place to put it, then it doesn't happen.
So you're talking.
If we do find a place to put it, then the developer will pay to have it moved.
Okay, let's hear.
So that would be, we need to hear that from the board on that. So that's, 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 that's the heart of the question is, is what does the board desire to do with the Norton House?
And when Joe Petraselli was here and he was speaking at the work session last week, he said, you know what? I'm here in downtown. I have a major investment downtown. And they have a beautiful building proposed, but at the same time, you got to have skin in the game. And if it's going to help our historic district and it's going to make the row of four houses look well, or if we can relocate it, he's agreed to do it. So I don't see why that couldn't be a contingency.
So between, so between preliminary approval and final, the town has to.
Find a location to put it. Otherwise, it goes away.
What does the board say?
More importantly, find the money to do it. Because once it's moved, we now have something sitting in our laps that we have to pay for.
Yep.
And that's more important to me than the move at this point in time.
Yep. Well, the problem with Castaldi was that he had, he already has a tenant for that space. And he's saying that retrofitting this building to meet his tenants' needs didn't work. But if you were to pick up the building and you were to move it to a new location, it could be occupied right away.
Has any, has anybody actually looked at the bones of this building to see that it could sustain a move?
Yep, Joe Petraselli and the house moving company.
And they both feel that it could be moved without.
And Richard Lines and Cliff, yes.
Haven Kindland.
The other problem with the location of Mr. Castaldi's lot, it is within the flood zone.
Yeah, but that doesn't matter, especially if you move it over to the north side of the street where.
And I'm saying, I'm about Castaldi's site on the south side of me.
Right. Yeah, so that's not even on the table anymore.
Okay.
Okay, so let's, Chris?
Yeah, I just want to be heard. There was a lot of discussion. First of all, we really appreciate the time you're taking today and the dialogue and your input. But I just want to, I kind of want to get, and I want to get, make sure we have clear direction. I think we're working towards some clear direction for us. We have been talking about this with the board since last September. So it's good to finally have some clear direction on certain aspects of the project that are important. So let me try to discuss a few things. It's very important to have the mechanicals, as Roy could probably attest. It's important to have the mechanicals out of the floodplain. So that's why the mechanicals are up in the northern edge of the, of the building so that we stay above the seven foot elevation. The reason the built, the lobby is on the side of the building, center of the building, is because we are coordinating with the elevator that goes to the rooftop. And the rooftop deck, rooftop lobby and the rooftop deck is the view over the picani, which is in the back of the building. So it's important for us to maintain that interior structure because of the elevator shaft and the access to the rooftop. So that's why we have the lobby and the entrance on the side of the building so you come into the middle of the building. We're very happy to provide whatever the board is seeking as far as interactive space, whether it's retail or, or restaurant or some type of food service. And we are providing over 19 feet of frontage on the side of the building and almost 38 feet of frontage on Main Street for this space. And I think the space will work and will provide elevations. The reason we didn't provide the elevations prior to this is we needed to have this meeting. We needed to get clear direction. We needed to have dialogue. And we've been asking for this dialogue for months, so we're very happy to have it. We really are happy. We want to move the project forward. We want to bring market rate units to Main Street. As Tim was saying, it is important for us to have at least one parking space for every unit. And we're willing to give up the two spaces in the garage, but we're going to need to, you know, we're going to need to offset the loss of two spaces with two spaces outside, off, off premises. That are going to be dedicated to this property. Are you not, are you going to have market rate units that don't have a dedicated spot? And that's not going to work either for this type of a project. So we do appreciate the dialogue. We do appreciate the direction. We are willing to contribute towards the moving of the house. Let me, let me clarify something, and I think Bobby can speak to this also. You'll have to unmute Bobby though. We still have a demo expense even if we move the house. Our estimate for total demo of both structures, that's the front one and the back one, and the site work, you know, the removal and the things that we need to do as part of the demo, is $48,000. So this concept that we're saving money by relocating the house is, is a fiction. Because we're still going to have to do demo work even if we move the house. We're still going to be paying money even if we move the house. So we're willing to contribute towards the moving, relocation of the house, plus pay our demo costs for the balance of the property. But we would like to put a cap on that contribution at 70, at $70,000 for the relocation cost. Bobby has been working with building movers. He's been talking to the people who'd be involved with the relocation of the house. So he's trying to get best estimates. He, this is what he does. He's a construction manager. So Bobby, maybe you can speak to both the demo and the relocation efforts that you've been undertaking.
Yes, I'd also like to thank the board for seeing us again. I mean, we said it from the first time we met all of you that we're going to be a long time in Riverhead and we're willing to work with you guys any way we can. We can figure out the retail part if that's what you guys want. If you don't want the retail, we'll figure it out without the retail. Just to touch on the moving and everything else, Dawn Movers went out and looked at the house last week. It can be moved, but it will be a difficult move because there's no first floor, floor framing. It sits on a foundation slab on grade, but it can be done. And they gave us a price, I don't know, $25,000, $30,000 to move it across the street just for the move. You have all the other things involved, the lowering that we're raising of the wires to get across the street, the new foundation that'll need to be put in place and all those other things. We are willing to step up and contribute to $70,000 in an effort to move the house. But again, we, I think we've been pretty clear all along. We don't want to slow the process down. We need to go into contract. We need to get this project moving along, so. And it'll be good for everyone. Once the project gets coming, it's going to be great for Riverhead. It's going to be, and we hope it's going to be good for us, so we're looking forward to it.
Okay, one last comment of Chris, and then we're going to move forward.
So I just wanted to tell you, we are agreeing to pay the rec fees of $108,000 and contribute $70,000 towards the relocation of the Norton House. We would really appreciate if the town board would move forward with the special permit that allows for the 89% lock coverage, the proposed lock coverage, and the preliminary site plan approval. And we'll work out the final details on the elevations and the space along Main Street. I don't necessarily want to call it retail space, but the, the public space along Main Street of 108 square feet. If that's what you want, we will go ahead and prepare the elevations and submit them to Carissa for circulation to the ARB for approval, hopefully by email. And we really, and we'll, we'll move towards final. We're looking to try to start this project in September. So, because we want to get a lot of the early work done before the winter. So we'd really appreciate if you could move forward with the special permit and the preliminary site plan approval. And we will work on the conditions that are contained in the preliminary between approval of the preliminary and approval of final.
Great. And I, I just want to say thank you, Bobby and Chris. I feel like we're all moving in the right direction here. I know between Roy and I, we will keep things moving along with the ARB and get those comments in as quickly as possible. And just one last thing as far as, you know, I will say again, working with Barry Long, we, the town invested a lot of money in UDA and I'm working hard to get our money's worth out of it. If I could just say one more thing. Bobby, can you please forward the planning staff a copy of the estimate for the Dawn movers? Because I believe that the Landmarks Preservation Commission had gotten an estimate of $48,000. So if you got one for $25,000, $30,000, that would be helpful.
Thank you, Jared.
Bobby, and also forward the demolition costs for what it's going to cost to remove the two buildings.
Okay.
That's okay. I don't know where they got that number from. Cliff, I don't know where you got that number from. It really doesn't matter.
I got it from a building mover, not Dawn, but I got it from Davis Building Movers.
No, I'm talking about the demolition cost. But thank you to the developer and to Landmarks and to ARB for all working together. And I'm sure it's going to be a great project. We're going to do everything that we can to help you along. And thank you for partnering with us to try and save this historic structure.
We're happy to be here.
Is that what you were trying to say, Cliff? Because you kept trying to say.
No, I just wanted to, I know that ARB is going to get the revised plans or whatever. And I wonder, I just hope that Landmarks is included in that as well.
Of course.
Yes, absolutely.
So if I could just ask for clarification, we want to just distill a lot of this discussion. So is the board, would the board like me to prepare a preliminary resolution for the upcoming board meeting? And in that, I will reference the 812 square foot, I guess, retail space. You know, we'll decide, determine what that will be. I will include language, Councilwoman, about if a suitable location is found for the relocation of the Norton House pending fiscal, you know, I'll, I'll work on the language with Jeff on that. I'll get you guys a copy, but I will prepare a preliminary approval resolution for the Tuesday meeting.
And then also ARB and Landmarks prior to.
ARB, Land.
And Chris and Bobby, will there be some kind of discussion about possibly having the door on the Main Street? Since that was in a lot of the comments.
So the, the main entry to the building, it cannot be on Main Street. It has to be on the side. I mean, Chris referenced the elevator going to the roof, but if you've ever been in a hotel and apartment house where the elevator is at one end of the building and you're in the apartment all the way at the other end of the building, it doesn't really work that well for our tenants. And also, it becomes the central core. So a lot of the mechanical things that are going up and down the building need to be centered so that you can, you know, go outward from there. I mean, we looked at that fairly extensively over the last year when we met with all the different, the various boards. You know, part of the problem too, in expanding that entry on the side, is that we don't own the property there. It's, it's town property. So we've, we've also looked at possibly putting some kind of canopy, glass and metal canopy over the entry to make it a little more significant. And as, as had been suggested by Roy and the ARB. But as far as moving that entry to Main Street, that, that's not going to be possible.
There is a door on Main Street.
May I, may I chime in on that? I'm sorry, may I chime in on that? I understand that the main building entrance needs to be on that side street. We're not asking that the main entrance be moved, but we're saying you can add a new secondary entrance on Main Street, which you already have as a fire exit. Make that one look more like a main building entrance. The people that live in the building will know that it really goes into the garage, but it still gives them an access directly to Main Street. And to the general public, it will look like the main entrance to a building.
And we'll, you know, in looking at the preliminary plan we sent you for this retail, I mean, the entry should be on Main Street too, not coming over.
That's what, that was my point.
Correct.
I agree.
Absolutely agree with you on that.
Okay, so.
No, it goes through the corridor.
Okay, so moving forward, Bobby, Chris, Rick, Roy, thank you. I think we are moving forward. A lot of information was shared and definitely put it, put it up for the resolution next week to be voted on. Again, it's preliminary. This is before. And then the discussions can continue as far as any adjustments being made before final approval.
Thank you again for your time, everyone. Thank you.
And have a good day.
Thank you. Thank you.
Moving forward, building and planning matters surrounding CCO coordination process for Island Water Park Site Plan.
There was, I believe, there was one here, the code revision, site plan fees. This will be, this will be really, really quick.
Okay, I don't see that on.
Second one listed.
It's on there, isn't it? And here's the town code.
Okay.
Revision.
No, I don't have it on the agenda, but okay.
Oh, it is.
It is. It's the second one.
It's on there.
Matters surrounding, all right, so very briefly, there's a section within our town code, specifically town code section 301-305G4. The way the code previously read, it said that if any land clearing, site work, or building construction or alteration is commenced prior to the submission of a site plan application, the required application review fee shall double the fee delineated. Basically, now, this has not been an issue yet, but in just reading the code, I kind of noticed a little loophole where, the way the code reads, technically, someone could come in on day one, make a site plan application. The next day, they could go and commence some clearing or some construction without permits. But because they had submitted that application, the way the code reads, we couldn't double the fee. So I proposed a slight modification that will read, if any land clearing, site work, or building construction or alteration is commenced prior to the granting of final site plan approval, including satisfaction of all conditions of said approval, the required application review fee shall, shall be doubled. Basically, it just removes that little loophole, kind of protects our interests again, not that it has been an issue to this point. But just in reading it and reviewing it with my, you know, job, I kind of saw the loophole and find a nice little way to close it up.
And great, and you say that this hasn't been an issue before.
Correct.
I personally know of three projects that people started before they committed a site plan. And what we have here is if someone starts a site plan without submitting, starts building or construction site without notifying the town that you're going to double the fees when they do file it, that's a no brainer. And I'm surprised that, thank you for picking that up.
No problem.
And being as soon, as far as that's concerned. Because there has been, and I know it, and I personally have seen it, and it's gone before the town board, where people have started projects before submitting the plan. And I commend you on, on closing that loop here.
All right, thank you.
So the only thing, I see a couple of inconsistencies. So number two says, in no instance shall a site plan review exceed $30,000. And then in four, it says the fee shall be doubled and the fee above may exceed $30,000, so.
So it would, if, if they violate, you know, if they do any sort of site work, the way the code would read with the revision, if they did any site work prior to final approval and satisfaction of conditions, the fee could be doubled in excess of the maximum $30,000 cap. That would only be, that would only be for cases of violations when, when they're coming in to develop a site. Right now, the site plan fee is capped at $30,000. And I believe that's just to not be overly excessive in your fees. But if someone goes and willfully violates the town code and initiates that site clearing or any sort of site work prior to site plan approval, the fees could double in excess of $30,000.
Right, I think that something needs to be addressed in the town code as far as doing test holes and creating like a four foot path of clearing in order to get deep into a site where. and creating like a four-foot path of clearing in order to get deep into a site where a sanitary system might go to do a test hole, because that could be considered, you know, work. I don't know what we're doing about that now as far as clearing for a test hole in the middle of a site that's not connected to sewers. But I think that's something that should be addressed in here as far as, I don't know whether we want to do a permit for that. I know they say no site clearing where you can't just go in and clear the whole site, but sometimes a small clearing is needed in order to do the test hole. So I think that that either should be in bold letters on the site plan application. If you're planning on doing any clearing for a test hole, you have to come in after preliminary approval or prior to final site plan approval or request it during the preliminary approval process.
All right, I'll, that's a very good point. I will, and that has come up. I have worked on subdivision where an applicant needed to do some test holes for health department approvals. Jeff and I spoke with him, you know, he kind of demonstrated where he was gonna cut. It was very limited. It was not like he just went in and clear-cut the property. But that is an excellent point, so I will work with Jeff. I'll try to incorporate some language into that, and I'll bring it back before the board, before we move for any public hearings or any sort of.
And then also, I think it should be, I think there should be other, something else in here that when a final site plan approval is given, if changes are made along the way in the site plan without coming back for an amended site plan, that the review of that, the fee should be doubled as well. Do we have that already? No, we don't.
No, right now, if, the way the code reads, if someone comes in with a site plan amendment, there is a five-hundred-dollar fee.
And that's it. And it could take four and five submissions in order to get it right and referrals as we're gonna see in the next application with, you know, Island Water Park. They changed the site plan after they got final approval. And now, it's been a lot of work in the planning staff in reviewing these resubmissions and resubmissions and resubmissions that it's, five-hundred dollars fee doesn't nearly cover their time. It should be based on the initial site plan approval and the alterations that are the changes from the initial site plan approval as per the five-hundred dollars plus the ten cents per, you know, square foot of any changes in site improvements from the final approval.
All right, I'll work on, I'll incorporate some of those changes, and we'll come back at a later work session to get this all smoothed out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
You're a busy man today, Greg. You're back up again. Building planning matters for SECO coordination process for Island Water Park site plan.
All right, so here we have a, the planning departments received an application to amend a previously approved site plan, which was approved by the Riverhead Town Board by resolution number two-hundred-and-six, dated March fifth, two-thousand and thirteen. That site plan approval authorized the construction of an outdoor recreation facility, including a four-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand-square-foot man-made lake, which was gonna be used as a rope-toe water skiing facility and other non-motorized boats, as well as a forty-nine-thousand-two-hundred-square-foot multipurpose building and a six-thousand-square-foot multipurpose building, as well as related parking, landscaping, lighting, sanitary, and drainage improvements. With the applicant's submission, the applicant did submit a letter dated June fourth, which detailed the changes that were made to the approved site plan. In that site plan, they removed one of the buildings. The use of the main building had changed. I will get into those changes momentarily. They expanded the size of the restaurant and their kitchen. They extended a balcony, a second-floor balcony. They added some stairwells. They changed, did some retaining wall changes and changed rain gardens. So now, this project had been reviewed, it had undergone extensive review. During the original approval, noted the following with regards to the general review and approval process. When this process was gone through, the SECO review, the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation actually acted as the lead agency for the purposes of the SECO review. At that time, the New York State DEC accepted a voluntary draft environmental statement, which is no longer permitted under the current SECO regulations, and they issued a notice of non-determination of nonsignificance or a negative declaration. That was issued in November of two thousand and eleven. The Suffolk County Central Pine Barrens Commission had issued a hardship exemption permit for the project with respect to clearing within the Suffolk County Central Pine Barrens compatible growth area. And the Suffolk County Planning Commission recommended approval of the application on December fifth, two thousand and twelve. In terms of the current application, the classification is a type-one action based on the significant involvement from multiple agencies and the changes of uses of the building, as well as the overall site. It is considered a type-one, and we will coordinate review with the New York State DEC, Pine Barrens, Suffolk County Planning Commission, New York State DOT, and the Suffolk County Department of Health Services. Subject site is a forty-two-point-five-acre site located on the south side of Middle Country Road in Calverton, just to the west of the existing western runway, and it is south of the town ball fields on Middle Country Road. Now, there is some clarification needed because we have a project owner, and they are working with two different design professionals. They're working with Jeff Zahn, who's a registered architect, and they're working with J.R. Holtzmacker, which is a civil engineering firm. There are some inconsistencies, and I need some clarification, both from the applicant and the design professionals, as to what plans they need to go forward, mean to go forward with. We did receive a letter from Eric Scott, who is president of Island Water Park. This letter is dated July ninth. He stated, quote, "A revised floor plan and site plan were recently submitted to your department for review. It is our intention to finish the warehouse space as indicated on the May eleventh, two-thousand and twenty floor plan. We understand from conversations that the parking is not adequate to build out the space as per the floor plan. Island Water Park will remove the tow rope attraction as shown on the original approved site plan and will seek a variance from the zoning board of appeals for deficient parking stalls, approximately fifteen spaces." It is noted that the, in his letter, that mention of the fifteen parking spaces, parking calculations were not provided, so that fifteen space variance that he referenced, it's actually not needed based on the current plans. Now, I have received two sets of plans. One would show, when this original, when this building was originally approved, it was approved for thirty thousand square feet of the building was gonna be used as warehousing and exhibition. Now, for parking requirements for warehousing spaces, our town code requires for warehousing space, one space per one thousand square feet of floor area up to five thousand square feet, and then one parking space for each additional ten thousand square feet. So by those calculations, they required for the original thirty thousand square foot warehouse only required eight parking stalls. Now, I've received two different plans. There was, the impetus for this was the fire marshal had gone out to do a inspection, and he noticed that in this thirty thousand square foot warehouse portion of the building, the applicant had constructed a wave pool. Now, this wave pool, surf pool, wave pool, it was a recreational pool use in a space that was supposed to be warehousing. The fire marshal informed Jeff and myself, we went out and did our own inspection and did confirm that there was a change in that use. That was done without any changes to building permits, without any sort of site plan approval.
Let me see if I get this correct. They had a certain designation. It was supposed to be a warehouse. Because I did, I know that we did receive a complaint on that. And then, and I think that's why you went out. And when you went out there, some, they were construction, they were constructing a pool?
Constructing a pool in the warehouse.
I understand it was very, very massive, which goes back to the code that people just decide to change site plan or decide to construct. I also understand that in this project, there was, it was stop-work order. They never applied to build. I understand the foundation was in, and thereafter, correct me if I'm wrong, in the building department, I'm just getting.
The building, the building is constructed. The reason for the stop-work order was because of the violate, you know, the lack of building permits for the surf pool, wave pool.
They had no building permits, and they were putting in a foundation, correct?
No, they had building permits.
No, they put, they put, they put the pool in. The pool's been installed.
No, I'm talking about before putting the pool in.
They had building permits.
No, yes, the building was, the building itself has permits. So the building was permitted, you know, they had got the site plan approval. The reason for the stop-work order was the violation of the site plan because they're changing the use of that interior space.
I thought it was because they were doing construction during COVID and they were not considered essential.
I believe the, I believe the stop-work order was issued, I believe, in February. I don't have the date right in front of me, but I believe that was done in February prior to the COVID shutdown. So the COVID had no impact on whether they were essential or non-essential. The stop-work order was issued because of the violation. And there were also some changes that they had made to the second-floor office space. But the most significant, the most significant aspect is really the change of use. So as in the staff report that I distributed on page five, I did include a picture. Now, this was the approve, on the approved site plan, which was approved by the town board in two thousand and thirteen. The floor plan showing the layout and the uses, the interior spaces, was included as a small inset picture on one of the sheets of the, on one of the sheets of the floor plan. What I've received now is a full-sized architectural drawing, which actually gives details of what that interior space is gonna be. Now, really, the significant issue and why it's so significant is because, as I stated, thirty thousand square foot of warehousing requires eight parking stalls. Now, I've got one plan here, which just shows the surf pool and shows a remaining, I believe it is thirteen thousand square, no, I'm sorry, about twenty, twenty-three thousand ninety-nine square feet of storage space. Now, I've also received a plan, which shows a floor plan that includes a full conversion of that warehouse space into basically a full interior arcade entertainment center. Now, for reference, thirty thousand square feet of warehouse requires eight parking stalls. Thirty thousand square feet of indoor entertainment space would be parked at one stall per three hundred square feet. So if that thirty thousand square feet was converted into full entertainment, that use would require a hundred parking stalls. So we go from a use, which is the least intense of requiring eight, to a potential that something requires a hundred parking stalls. Because of the clearing restrictions that are placed on from compatible growth, because of the hardship permit that was issued by the Pine Barrens, the applicant is really gonna be facing an uphill battle if they need to expand the parking lot. So what the applicant's done in order to sort of fit the new change of use, they're trying to, they're basically trying to back themselves into their existing parking. So now, the board has to consider the fact that we've got a plan which shows just a surf pool, and they provided parking calculations, which appear that they would be able to meet the existing parking, versus the fact that the applicant has submitted a floor plan, which shows a full build-out of this space, you know, which would trigger a significant increase in parking.
That's not being proposed right now, correct?
Well, again, that's, so that's, that's why I need clarification. As I stated in Eric Scott's letter, he said, "Our inten, it is our intention to finish the warehouse space as indicated on the May eleventh, two-thousand and twenty floor plan." And now, I did speak with Mr. Scott, did speak with the design professionals to try to get everybody on the same page and streamline, that May eleventh plan, prepared by Jeff Zahn, shows the full build-out.
Oh, well, then they.
So that's why, that's why I need clarification from the applicant, is do they want to just have the surf pool? Or is their intention to go through with the full build-out?
Yeah, they wouldn't be able to go through the full build-out unless they went back to the Pine Barrens Commission, back to the DEC, back to Suffolk County Planning, and back through all of the
Correct.
procedures that you have outlined that, you know, based on what they're saying now, with just the surf pool and then that, that other space being storage space or whatever it is, then, and not the use of the lake, is what you said, right?
Correct. So they're actually, because they've.
They're gonna be back before the Pine Barrens Commission again in order to build out that space if they intend to do so in the future.
In addition to the, in addition to the change of use from warehousing to the surf pool use, they also have significantly expanded the proposals for their restaurant seating. The original approvals for the restaurant were for a total of a hundred and twenty-five seats. The new, the new proposal for the restaurant comes in at a total of two-hundred-and-thirty-two seats. So they've expanded their restaurant by about a hundred and eight, I believe, a hundred and eight seats. So that in and of itself requires an additional, they went from forty-six, I'm sorry, they went from forty-two required stalls to now their restaurant requires seventy-eight stalls. So that is a net increase in, of thirty-six parking stalls that's required just for the expansion of the restaurant.
But didn't you say that with everything that they're proposing, with the expansion of the restaurant, with the surf pool, with the storage space, with everything that they're proposing, that they meet the parking requirements and they don't need any variances?
With the eliminate, with the elimination of the rope-toe use, which really was the reason why this project came to be. You know, there was a large, you know, a large history back when they, you know, took out all the sand and created this man-made lake, so, you know, the town, the town board granted approval for an outdoor recreation facility with rope-toe ski use. And now the applicant's basically proposing to just abandon that rope-toe ski use, which was what the site was originally designed for, not for any.
Does that mean it's gonna truck all the sand back in?
No, actually, all the sand.
That's what I'm curious about.
Actually, all, all the sand was used for the ball fields.
No kidding?
All the sand. All the sand was used for the ball fields and was given free by the applicant to build the ball fields. And recreation will determine that, so, most of the sand for that. But the original approval was for a waterski lake with boats, with gas engines, and it was going to have a betonite liner. And the original site plan approval, way back when, the engineer said that the depth to groundwater was much greater than it supposedly was. And then they had to come back in for another, I think they've owned this property since two thousand and one. And I think they had a site plan approval in two thousand and six, and then another site plan approval in two thousand and thirteen, based on the actual depth of groundwater. And then going back to the Pine Barrens, and then the Pine Barrens saying, I mean, I, I know this very well because people that have problems with the planning department and site plan approval, they come to me for help. And they've been coming to Tim a lot lately for help, too, now that he's the liaison to the planning. I was liaison to planning for all those years, so they were coming to me for help. But I recall the history being quite extensive, and the Pine Barrens Commission making a lot of changes and requiring him to do a tow rope without the.
The motorized, motorized use, yeah.
Gas-powered boats in the lake. So he agreed to do that, and now he's saying, "That was never my intention, but it would be an added feature. And if I do decide to do that in the future, I realize I don't have enough parking room for it, and I have to go back to the Pine Barrens and to the DEC and to Suffolk County Planning and file a separate application to recreate that use." But the original intention was to have the thirty thousand square foot warehouse space to showcase and sell his, and show his boats that he sells, because I think he sells boats, and to use the boats to go around the lake. That was the original purpose. And it's changed.
So originally, it was water, it was water skiing?
Yeah, there were some, back in the early two thousands, there were some plans to have motorized boat use. Again, as the councilwoman stated, they, those plans did sort of change. They eliminated motorized use to where it would just be rope-toe water skiing and non-motorized boat, like kayaks, sailboats, that sort of thing.
Right. So the first approval was for the motorized boats. And then when they went back to the Pine Barrens Commission, the Pine Barrens Commission said, "We'd rather not have that." And with the depth to groundwater being so shallow, can you change it to the tow rope? And which they did.
So now, since they went ahead and did these other things without approval, added the, I think you said, the arcade room and the surf pool. They're going to go not have the tow rope, and that's where they're gonna place the park. That's what the space they're gonna use for the parking.
Correct. They, the applicant, the property owner has submitted a letter saying that he's willing to eliminate the rope-toe use.
Were there any repercussions for them that they moved forward with these things without getting approval? Other than you did go out and do a stop, I'm asking Greg.
Any, any building permit fees will need to be doubled. I mean, again, site plan fees, really, they, the site plan fee should be doubled, so we would get a, you know, a thousand-dollar fee instead of five hundred.
That doesn't seem that much.
I mean, again, you know, in terms, in terms of penalties, that, that's what's written into the code. But again, like you said, the, the board needs to determine, you know, what's gonna hap, if he's just willing to now abandon the use of that lake, what's gonna happen with that lake?
Would you guys have the information on how much sand went to the ball fields versus how much went out the door for cash money?
I do not have that information. I'd have to, I'd have to do some research.
That's a good point.
Yeah, and how much it costs to actually move each yard of sand. But Chris Kent was actually on the town board at the time when they asked them to give them the sand for the ball fields. So Chris could probably confirm that as well.
All right, so, and at this point, this is a very high-level overview discussion of this project. We will need to do secret coordination with all the involved agencies. And again, based on the fact that the DEC assumed lead agency on this project back in two thousand, you know, in the late two thousands, early two thousand and tens, I don't know how to really reconcile that with the fact that the SECO regs have changed since then. So out of an abundance of caution, which is why we refer it to all these agencies, you know, it's very possible that DEC may come back and, you know, based on the changes of uses. I mean, there are some changes, like I said, to retaining walls, stuff like that. I don't necessarily think that's a significant obstacle. I think they needed to do that to make the site work. But the DEC may have some comments and, you know, may try to assert some authority over the changes of use on the site, which is something which will be handled through the secret coordination.
Did they have a mining permit through the DEC in order to remove the sand? And did they have a monitor on site monitoring how much sand was taken out? And it was, were they ever in violation of that?
Jeff Seaman was hired by the town to monitor it. He did not indicate any violation of the sand removal. Just to cut to the. Uh, just to cut to the chase, so to speak, uh, the reason why this is before you today is to move the application forward. The first step to do that is to initiate SECREA, Lead Agency Coordination. As Greg pointed out, there was a prior SECREA determination that was issued by DEC. The town cannot rely on that, because that was on a different project that no longer exists, so the town board, as a recipient of that application, needs to send out the, uh, Lead Agency Coordination Letter to all involved agencies, to see if anybody else would like to assume lead agency. So, the resolution that you, we'll see before you on Tuesday, will be just be to initiate SECREA and, and start the thirty-day coordination review period.
Okay, so we're going in, uh, we're gonna request SECREA, because obviously, the use changed, and it's a drastic change. So, let's put what happened behind us, and we're gonna have to start all over again.
That's correct.
Correct, got it.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, last but not least, engineering, accounting, matter surrounding repairs to ambulance parking lot, April. Bill, here, my phone call.
Oh, boy.
Money involved, so.
Tonight.
Was this given to Devin to put online?
Yeah, you have that, but Devin, that was put online?
Thank you.
Okay, we always tell everybody, we said, "Donna, you know, you must have stopped to put online, you'll put it up afterwards." Make sure that, uh, Tim Gannon gets a copy. Devin, behind you, uh, have Tim get a copy.
Tonight, Drew.
And Denise, you'll, you'll see this in a little while, so put it up. And they're gonna move, right? You see the cost?
Yeah, I know, that's-
It's like, uh- You gotta start working on that, I think they have something up, right?
I don't know, man, I, I just, I don't see it, look at the picture, I've been up and walked on it, I hate just, I have a problem with this.
So, what we're discussing this morning is the parking area, or the driveway, rather, for the ambulance yard on Osborne, next to the Highway Department Yard. In early June, the new district manager, on his first day of work, sprained his ankle, uh, badly, rather, on the angle irons that you can see at the door junctures, where the doors meet the rest of the, the driveway. Those joints are in terrible condition, they're all rotting out. The rest of the driveway can't be repaired, I had, um, laser look at it, and I had Terry look at it, and it's gotta be replaced. And while I was there, one of those two times, I actually saw someone step in one of the holes, and I don't know how he didn't sprain his ankle. He was a perfect step, he stepped in and out, and the other way, it would've been bad.
By the way, Drew, I'm not going over there.
So, we have, uh, lasers on the county contract for driveway replacement, as well as paving, and the total is seventy-two thousand dollars. Right now, we're trying to get those monies from ambulance funds, and I know Bill has been investigating that. So, unless there are any questions from me? Bill?
All right. Seventy-two thousand, and we're looking for, uh, a possible location to build a barn.
What are they gonna do, Drew? Are they gonna, like, with the concrete driveway that's there now, are they gonna remove it, or are they gonna break it up and pulverize it and use it as base?
Remove and replace. They're gonna put new reinforced concrete, basically replacing kind, and then they're gonna pave over it. If you just paved over the concrete that was there, it would last two years, and then by five, you'd have to rip it out.
That's all we needed to last for.
That's all, we have, we have, uh, possible plans, I know that Tim is working on it for, uh, building a new barn.
At a different location.
Yeah, so, and they're working, the hospital may give you a location, I understand?
Possibility, possibility.
So, he's, he's working on that, um, what would the cost be just to pave it over?
Well, there's, the one issue with that, that the ambulance was not happy with, is it's not a smooth flush at the gate, you'd have to feather it off, because again, the surface is flush at the actual doors, so if you're putting pavement on top of it, you're gonna have a two-inch difference, but you can feather it, but it's still, you know, it's not an ideal solution at all.
Yeah, but it would be a temporary solution, and even if they chopped out, in this big seam coming down the driveway, if they chopped out, like, a foot and a half on each side of it, and then put, um, you know, just poured the concrete in between that small space, rather than removing and replacing, I think that would save a lot of money also. I'd get a proposal on that. In the seams and the areas that need to be cut out, have them cut out?
Jody, we've been through this with the two contractors, they said it's not worth it.
I know, but-
It's not worth it for them to do it? It's worth it for our pocketbook.
I was just gonna say, it's not really worth it to us, unless you only want it to last two years. If you want it to last two years, then that's fine.
I think cutting it out and then repouring would, that would fix it. I think it would fix it. I think if you just created a new panel down the middle, one where it's seaming out, and do two feet on each side, chop out two feet on each side.
Well, you're driving the price up again, rather than just paving it, then.
I'm not saying paving it, I don't think that paving it'll work, it's gonna create, still, you're gonna have the dip there, because it doesn't have a solid, a so-, a solid base. What I'm saying is to cut out two feet, both sides of that big seam going down the middle, cut out a four-by-four square where that other one is, and then, I'd say temporarily feather where the door frames are, and to, because if Tim has a solution, that's gonna happen, and they're gonna move within the next two years, this building is not gonna be used for this, they may not even need the overhead door pull. That might come out.
Okay, so that's what you like a, um, an estimate on, then?
Yes.
I still think Bill should discuss, um, available-
That's fine, no, I agree, I agree, let's hear it.
Available funding.
Sure.
So, there's no current funds for this project? Obviously, we would've-
No, especially under COVID.
Um, and we did just allocate money for their radios from their fu-, from fund balance in the district itself, and, um, we're also looking at, um, money allocating for, uh, engineering services, uh, for a new building. Uh, so, that being said, we're going forward with the engineering services to possibly do a new building, I don't know, two to five years would be a good timeframe in getting that building done, and if we can have a short fix for this, I don't know the difference in cost, but seventy-two thousand dollars would be a lot coming out of fund balance for, you know, well, that wouldn't be temporary, but it'd be temporary because we're looking to move forward.
Understood.
I think sidewalks could probably be, Anne Marie?
So, I don't wanna necessarily disagree with Bill. I don't wanna disagree with Bill necessarily, but, um, my thought, when I was asked to review it, was that the funds would be coming from the ambulance district funds, in which we have capital reserve funds for projects such as these. And I'm a little delinquent, but I had, um, did a preliminary discussion with Councilman Hubbard, and I owe him documents, and so I wanna provide a write-up to the town board with some, to each one of you, because I think it's important that we, number one, we do have that funding source, no matter which way this board determines is most appropriate regarding the repair. In addition, I think we should, quote, "move forward" with, quote, "a map and plan", which will include whatever improvement you decide, and in addition, I think we can include in that map and plan, um, the potential alternative to retain the expert services needed for the design of an ambulance barn. It doesn't mean putting it in the map and plan requires it to happen affirmatively now, it's if Councilman Hubbard does secure a location for it, you have the approval built into the map and plan already, and it's ready to go. And it's a lot to take in, but, like I said, I have a write-up, if I could just hand out to all of you as an example.
Was that given to us, like, prior?
No, it's gonna have to go up online, so.
Yeah, Devin, we did send a memo out to all department heads, that anything that was, uh, being given, um, at a meeting-
This is, this is an internal memo from your council to members to the town board. It does not go up online.
Right, but, but the paperwork does, I think is the point that the supervisor's gonna make.
Not, not this one I'm handing, to be clear.
Okay, good, yeah.
So, we can have that.
Okay, thank you.
Right, the other one's up.
That was quick, thank you.
Drew, also, just replacing these sections of sidewalk, it looks like there's one, two, three panels, cause-
Four.
Four, four, because they, the sidewalk as they are, it looks like they meet the handicap accessibility as far as width.
The side, those sidewalks are fine.
Thank you. Okay, good.
Um, so, as far as any other temporary fix, even if we just paved it, which we're not, that would be thirty thousand. Jody, what you're suggesting is probably gonna be thirty thousand as well. It's not gonna be a cheap fix. If they've gotta remove concrete, put in, um-
Form it.
-rebar on both sides, in those areas, it's gonna be thirty thousand dollars.
Not both sides, they're just gonna take out one big chunk down the middle where that seam is. It's gonna be a four-foot strip-
Yeah.
-from the road all the way up, that they're gonna take out, they're gonna remove it, and then they're gonna form it, and then they're gonna, they could put rebar or mesh.
You have to reinforce it.
It has to be rebar, it can't be the mesh?
No, it cannot, it's gotta be number five.
Okay. Cause the cars are going over it, and the weight of the, the ambulance is-
Heavy ambulances at high speed.
I, I'd just like to see a proposal on it, especially if it's a temporary fix, because the next people that go in here, once the ambulance department moves, may not have the heavy equipment that the ambulance has.
Mm-hmm.
Things always take longer, I don't, I'm not crazy about temporary fixes, I'm gonna lean more towards, we can get the money from ambulance, that we do it as it should be done.
Bill said there's absolutely no money right now in the ambulance.
Not even, what about it, no, ambulance, he said in the ambulance fund.
Bill?
We should just confirm what's in the radio.
Absolutely no money left whatsoever.
No, there's no money left in the operating part, there's money left in fund balance, it would be interesting to do a, six thousand dollars.
So, the ambulance doesn't have even-
Anne Marie gave us a very extensive memo of probably, cause Anne Marie does that sometimes.
Oh, I can do two copies.
Okay.
All right. We know Anne Marie's very thorough.
That's good.
Did you get that?
I didn't get anything.
Okay.
I think she accidentally made you two.
So, Jody and-
There's still a lot of material here, Marie threw.
Yeah, I've got two also.
Yeah.
In addition to the strip on, up the middle, you know, there's other joints that are completely destroyed, right?
I didn't see that.
Seams. There's three sections, so there's two seams, and then there's the doors. Those, the seams are completely gone.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't look good, Drew, but what I'm saying is that if there's a new location for the ambulance, where the capital funds may have to be used to contribute a portion of the funding for a new location for the ambulance, that it may be fiscally prudent to try and just chop out these squares in these places where the other scenes are, I mean, I see what you're talking about, but I think that, you know, I, I, it doesn't look good, but we don't know what the next location could be. It could be a preschool, where parents are, like, driving up and dropping their kids off for preschool, we don't know what the future use of that is, and then possibly the, you know, the lease of that building, if the town still retains ownership of it, is, um, and we don't have to sell it in order to provide funds to buy, to contribute to a new ambulance, then it would be their responsibility to get that fixed in order to suffice their need, rather than the town exhausting our capital budget in the ambulance corps to make these improvements, or, or even using, I think we probably have a million in there, so ten percent of that capital bu-, project, when it could be put in the lap of whoever takes over occupancy after the ambulance is gone.
The other argument is that if we do fix this as you propose, and we decide to sell the property, the property is now worth a little bit more money, because it's got a brand-new.
And that's what I'm thinking, I mean, to me, it just, it actually looks terrible, and it's just like, even-
I just know the condition of that driveway.
It just kills me to-
Unless all the holes are filled, someone is gonna get hurt, and on the very, like I said before, on his very first day, the depart-, the district manager barely hurt his ankle, and he was this far from filing a lawsuit.
Regardless of anybody threatening to file a lawsuit, if we need to fix it, we have to fix it. You know, you know, people may threaten all the time, and they take years to go to court, and whatever's happening, we, the issue here is not the lawsuit, the issue here are pending or alleged or threats, whatever it is, it's not the issue here. We need to move on if this is gonna, if we're gonna rectify, and in what manner.
Right, so we need to read through the documents that Anne Marie gave us, and see if we can use capital funds in order to pay for it, number one, and number two, make the decision as to whether or not it's worth it for us to do these improvements now, or that the improvements get done when we sell the property, or how soon that may be.
Right. I think we should have a further discussion on this, there's a lot of variables all over the place, and, um, I, this can't be resolved on just introducing this right now. Thank you for doing the, uh, the, uh, the estimate on the full replacement, but, um, we need to, uh, there's a lot of coram this year that we have to address.
Okay.
Anne Marie, did you wanna say something?
Yeah, well, I just, I had asked the supervisor if I could amend the work session agenda to do, include a discussion on the Pecanic Community School and the possibility of them going into the George Young Community Center on a temporary basis until they get their site plan approval to move into the former Vertiber Retail Space. So, Anne Marie, I asked her to look some things up for me, and I think she's prepared to inform me and the entire board all at the same time.
And if I could, so, I just, before we end the other discussion, I just wanted to state that Bill and I were having a conversation, and we want an opportunity to sit down with Councilman Hubbard, because we agree to disagree on certain points, but we really need Councilman Hubbard's input, and like I stated, I owed Councilman Hubbard the documents I gave him about two weeks ago.
Okay.
So, I just gave it to him. Now, back to the potential license agreement, if I could, I wanna just provide you all with a draft resolution, and if after this discussion you agree, I would ask the town board, allow me to put the resolution in late, if you agree.
Okay. You mean late being tomorrow after four PM?
Well, you know, I could do it before tomorrow.
Add it to this, uh, to the rest of Sunday.
Yes.
No, it's just in addition to the-
I got two again, am I supposed to get two, two again?
Double trouble.
You're taking all my trouble.
Double trouble, I think that's what it is.
Okay, all right.
So, I did talk to the recreation superintendent about it, he said that the Bridge Club, who would normally occupy one room, is not comfortable in going back to the building as of yet. The day camps that we have going on right now at the George Young Community Center end August twenty-first, and the Pecanic Community School is looking to occupy it, I believe, the first week in September.
Yeah, so-
Well, how long?
For, until they get the other building up and running, right? Yeah, uh, no, three and a half months, it would be limited. So, just a highlight for the town board, if you recall, the last work session, we had, uh, Bloom Learning Center seeking to go into Stotsky Park, you're gonna have a resolution in the packet for that. At the time, Councilwoman Giglio did express concern that, um, Pecanic Community School, she was aware they might be seeking a temporary location. So, it actually turns out, they were seeking a location, the councilwoman, um, looked into it, met with them, asked them what their requirement was, thereafter, the councilwoman woman met with Ray Coyne for a possible license agreement for the George Young Community Center. As the town board is aware, due to COVID, um, the recreation department has not scheduled programs, classes, or camps. In addition, Ray informed both the councilwoman and I, he does not intend to until, uh, likely December. So, it actually dovetails quite nicely to a short-term license agreement for Pecanic, um, Community School. Uh, it's really like a win-win, it would be a, so, then in turn, the supervisor has- It's really like a win-win. It would be a, so then in turn, the supervisor has had addressed with me certain concerns. Um, I repeat myself a lot about my advocacy for license agreements when it's town property. One reason is when you give a license agreement, unlike a lease, it is not a property interest. You are not giving a property interest. So the concern of whether or not they're holdover, really, they don't have an argument for that because they don't have a, any property right or interest in the licensed space. In addition, the agreement and the highlighted language makes clear that this land, the building and improvements are held for the benefit of the public trust. The town board is well aware, the only way to undo property preserved for the public trust is by an act of the New York State Legislature. So I'm fully confident, um, that the language in the resolution, in addition, I added, and I didn't wanna bore you with more paperwork, but I added additional language at the request of Councilwoman Giglio to make certain all those concerns were actually fully articulated and addressed in the license agreement.
And that's perfect. You did address all the concerns that we, we still thank you for addressing that. We need to make sure that if we need to reclaim that property after the, uh, grievance date, um, if it was a lease, it's gonna be very, become, you have to go in and start civil action if the individuals don't wanna leave. And it's not this particular, uh, um, business that's going in, but across our, our land, you know, our, our buildings.
You won't have that problem then. I don't think you'll have that problem with these people.
Oh, no, no, no. We still have to have it in, in, in place for now and the future.
Understood.
Correct.
And it's great. It was addressed.
So. And they're gonna pay the same fees as what we were offering to Blue River, um, Education.
Blue River. What is it?
Bloom.
Bloom Learning Center.
Bloom Learning Center over at Stotsky Park.
Yeah, it, it's essentially going to mirror. The only additional language I added was to address and assure the town board that they could be confident that when our programs resumed, it would be ours. And just one more point speaking to that, the language in the license agreement makes clear it's non-exclusive use. So in other words, the town will always have the right to use that building.
Perfect. That's all we want. Securing our, our rights and making sure that it's done legally. Great job, uh, both of you. So Jody and Anne Marie.
So just a quick question, and I think this seems like a great thing. I'm happy that we can work with them. I know that they were really anxious to get in by September, so this is all good. Um, I just wondered if Liz Casey went out and looked at the space.
It was, um, she wasn't able to make it yesterday, but she did send two of her representatives to come and look at it and they were quite pleased.
And they thought they could make it work, cause I think this is their two younger classes that they're looking to.
Yeah, that's what I had said last week. I thought, I knew you had said it was K through six, so it would, the Stotsky Park wouldn't work for them.
Well, the whole school is K through six.
Right, but this was just two pre-K classes that they were looking for. And they're asking in turn that, because the reason why they have to expand their area is because of COVID and the separation distances that's going to be required for the education year coming up, that we help them in expediting their site plan approval to convert the Vertiber retail space into an education center. So I know that they did retain Charles Cuddy is what they told me, that's working on the site plan applications and the, um, design layout for the site. And they just respectfully asked that we help them expedite that application so that when this license agreement terminates at the end of November, they can move directly into Vertiber.
Yeah, and I think it's good. And I think it was just the fire inspections they were worrying about. And the nice thing about this is that there are other spaces that are Redeemer Lutheran, so this is closed.
Yes.
And I know they like the Vertiber space because there's actually, I think, some kind of back road that connects their two spaces. So it seems like they provide a nice service for our town and I'm glad that, um, this has all worked out. Sounds good to me.
All right, please stop.
Thank you, Anne Marie.
Yes. Okay, um, moving forward, we have, uh, Devin, can you please read the resolutions before us today?
Sure.
I didn't bring my, my computer.
There you are, mine.
Oh, you have the resolutions and.
Here, I can give you my pack, Jody.
I, oh, you have. There you go.
Thank you. Scary, scary. As we say in kindergarten.
Okay, resolution number one, New Jerusalem Church Water Capital Project number eight-one-nine-five-seven, closure. Number two, approves Nunk Pro Tunk license agreement with East End Arts. Number three, approves license agreement with Quinn Lee Inc., D B A Bloom Stotsky Park Tag Building. Number four, refund request of fireworks application fee for Bating Hollow Club. Number, number five, authorize the sewer district employees to attend seminar.
Okay, before you move forward on to the next resolution, I wanna make a statement on this resolution. Um, I, is this is, uh, to send two, uh, new water district employees to training? Each training cost is, uh, I believe for each person is.
Thirty-one hundred.
Three thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars. So it's gonna cost over six thousand dollars to send two people to get a certification for the water department.
Sewer.
Oh, excuse me, for the sewer department. And I know that training is very valuable. Um, this is a large expense, expense. And I wanna make sure the district, uh, our taxpayers receive value on this training. So I'm gonna recommend the town board add a condition to this resolution, uh, authorizing, uh, the approval uh, uh, and the expenditure, however, that we're gonna subject it to a condition. So if, th, this employee who's now gonna get this sought-after certification at our expense, um, if they leave town within two years of their hire date, that they should, they're, they're gonna have to reimburse the district taxpayers, us, for the cost and the expense of this training. Um, and it, it can be deducted through, uh, their earnings, through, uh, SCAD, the crew time, sick vacation, and so forth. This is not a com, uncommon, uh, uh, act that, uh, many, uh, businesses and public entities take when you go and you spend such a huge amount of money to certify people and then they go, oh, I'm sought after. The reason we, they don't have the certification, cause we can't find them. So now we're gonna give them the certification and say, six months from now, I'm leaving. Now we're hiring another, uh, uh, individual to replace that, that, that position and then we're gonna send them for training again. So that's all I'm asking, two years of employment. And, uh, if I can, uh, have approval of the board to just amend that resolution and we'll have, uh, Diane there to it.
I think that's a great idea. I think that it's also, they could fail the test too. So we could send them to this class and then if they don't pass the test, they don't become a plant operator and then the sewer district is in trouble, cause we're required to have a certain amount of sewage plant operators. So I think there's, um, I think that not only if they have to stay with us for two years, but if they don't pass the test, then they didn't take it seriously. And I think that they should be reimbursing the town at least half the cost through a period of time.
Perfect. So I think it's a good idea, but you did bring it up the other day about when Michael was here. You sure he didn't put it in, he didn't put it in there yet?
No, no, that's why we're adding it.
You brought it up the other day?
Yes.
Okay.
And we're just adding it, just amending the resolution.
I think it's good.
Okay, thank you. Uh, you're up to number six, I understand.
Right, okay. Number six, Bayberry Park Tennis Court Project seven-one-nine-zero-one, closure. Number seven, extends bid contract for well and pump testing for the Riverhead Water District. Number eight, authorizes the supervisor to execute an agreement authorizing the town to accept funds from Suffolk County Office for the Aging to supplement the town's expanded in-home services for the elderly program. Number nine, authorizes town clerk to publish and post notice to consider a local law to amend chapter two-seventy-five of the Riverhead Town Code entitled Stormwater Management and Erosion and Sediment Control.
Hold on one second. You know what? Okay, yep, this is the increase in fees. So. Great, thank you.
Number ten, authorizes the supervisor to execute an agreement with D and B Engineers and Architects P C for the town's stormwater management program.
Thank you again.
Number eleven, authorizes Larry Levi, D B A On-Side Productions to provide additional cable cast production services regarding the Board of Assessment Review Hearings on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty, Nunk Pro Tunk. Number twelve, authorizes the remaining, uh, I'm sorry, the renaming of a portion of Roanoke Avenue, Riverhead, New York. Number thirteen, rejects bids for traffic signal maintenance and emergency repair. Number fourteen, approves special event chapter two-fifty-five application for Darkside Productions' Darkside Haunted House. Number fifteen, approves cha, uh, special event chapter two-fifty-five application for New York Marine Rescue Center for the twenty-third annual five K run for the Ridley, October eleventh, twenty-twenty. Number sixteen, approves special event application for chapter two-fifty-five for Riverhead Country Fair. Number seventeen, amendment fee waiver request of special event application for P C Richard and Son. Number eighteen, cancels bid for buses for summer recreation and teen, teen camp trips. Number nineteen, amendment fee waiver request of special event application for Race Awesome Jamesport Triathlon. Number twenty, amendment fee waiver request of special event paddle battle. Number twenty-one, cancels bid for town of Riverhead and Calverton Sewer District's Generator Preventative Maintenance and Service twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one. Number twenty-two, authorizes Nunk Pro Tunk, the supervisor, to execute memorandum of understanding with Riverhead Town Police Benevolent Association, Inc., P B A. Number twenty-three, East. Number twenty-two, Jody?
Yeah.
Bill, can, Bill, can you speak to that? The P B A, the M O U of the P B A?
I don't think we discussed this in executive, did we?
We did.
Yeah, a while ago.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, I'm sure I don't have a problem with it. You can discuss it with me after, that's fine.
Okay. Number twenty-three, East Creek Budget Adjustment. Number twenty-four, which is also a C D A reso, resolution authorizing the town of Riverhead to purchase property located at one-seventeen East Main Street, Riverhead, New York, Suffolk County Tax Map number six-hundred dash one-twenty-nine dash one dash twelve, one-twenty-one East Main Street, Riverhead, New York, Suffolk County Tax Map six-hundred, one-twenty-nine, one-thirteen, and one-twenty-seven East Main Street, Riverhead, New York, Suffolk County Tax Map six-hundred, one-twenty-nine, one-fourteen, subject to permissive referendum. Number twenty-five, bond resolution authorization for the issuance of five million, five hundred thousand bonds of said town to pay the cost of the acquisition of parcels of land and demolition of existing structures at one-seventeen, one-twenty-one, and one-twenty-six East Main Street for purpose of creating public gathering space with design and construction, commercial and retail uses compatible with public space, all consistent with the urban renewal policies and goals for downtown, subject to permissive referendum. Number twenty-six, accepts retirement. Number twenty-seven, accepts retirement. Twenty, I'm sorry?
Nothing, I'm just.
Okay. Twenty-eight, publish and post notice to bidders for uninterruptible power supply for the Riverhead Police Department. Number twenty-nine, appoint seasonal beach and park personnel to the Recreation Department. Number thirty, authorizes notice to bidders, test well program phase one, installation of groundwater monitoring wells, capital project number four, Riverhead District Project number R W D W one-eight-zero-four. And number thirty-one, appoints a fire marshal one.
That is it.
That is it. Thank you very much.
I just wanna jump back to what we talked about earlier with the sewer department trainees going to school. Um, I, I agree with what you're saying. I don't agree with what Jody mentioned about, uh, if they fail the test, that we have to ask them to pay for half of it. Uh, because I'm not sure, and I just wanna check with Michael Reichel on this. I, I think if they fail it, I don't know that they've gotta go back to the class. I think they can sit for the test again, but a certain time period goes by before they have to. And they would have all the training and studying materials, uh, from taking the class. So I'm not sure they actually have to go back through a three thousand dollar class again. I just wanna, I just wanna find that out.
Yeah, let's double check that.
Good, perfect.
That makes sense.
It does. Um, thank you. Moving forward, uh, we're going into executive session to discuss matters surrounding employment terms and conditions of an employee. Can I have a first and a second to enter into our executive session, session?
Motion.
Second.
Third. Great, all in favor, all opposed?
Aye.
So we'll have a safe, uh, day, everyone, and thank you.